Whiteboard meeting of May, June 5th, 2014. And ask to look over the minutes for a minute and then someone can make a motion to approve.
Is today the 5th of the 6th? So the minutes say that the meeting was taped. Application is taped until the meeting is June 6th.
That's today. Okay, I can fix that. It's an easy one.
We're just considering that it might be tomorrow. Didn't you bring anything? Looking at that, I will accept the majority.
Can I second?
Any edits?
Yes. On the number two Old Business Door Water Management Subcommittee. The draft is not a final draft.
Would you recommend that McNabey put in a short sentence saying that the subcommittee is not discounted, but if they're not needed? I've reported that.
That would be new minutes.
I've reported that upstairs. That it for changes?
May draft is ready?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I'll sit with that then. Moving on to New Business with Land Service with Joe Stanley. Joe, if you wanted to flip the order of those, that's fine with us.
What's that?
If you wanted to wait and see if this Stanley did.
Yeah, that's in file, that's fine too. I was half expecting to see Jim as well, so yeah. Maybe we'll give them both a few more minutes if you've got something else to discuss.
Who wants to screen now?
Well, no, I mean, we don't need specifically to wait for anybody, but yeah, if you've got something else to discuss.
No, we don't. I was gonna say, if you wanted to do, ask Joe.
Well, that's no longer, that's my old compadres now. I don't see John here to discuss that.
That's quote unquote.
He's got contact?
I haven't heard that he is, so.
Has Ken looked at this more thoroughly though?
I know that the issue was that the biggest thing, he was looking, he was gonna look into the lines on the road and that there, one of the sites, one of the subdivision pieces was not quite the right size. So he was gonna make some corrections to that. Other than that, can I go?
So is John still working on his preliminary applications?
Barely, yeah. Very, everything, both of these projects are very preliminary. We barely discussed them at all.
By both, you mean John and Joe's?
Yeah.
Joe, the only hint I should give the board of these two little pieces?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we discussed it a little bit and I just thought we'd build it up there for you, but yeah, basically on the, on the same piece of property, you know, where the restaurant is, where we got previous approval for the survey shop upstairs on the second floor. The house on the same property has been come open, you know, it's a first-floor deal, it's a second-floor thing and we'd have our own building, so we're hoping to move our use over to that building and then, you know, kind of secondary to that is just kind of a, an end on the building that lends itself to something else and then I, as I explained, my mother just moved over this way. She's a retired art teacher, so I kind of put the idea in her head, why don't you go up there and try to sell some of your arts and crafts and things? Post-retirement hobby type of thing and then she seemed to like that idea, so we'd like to do that on the other side of the building as well.
Joe, help me out with this drawing.
Yep.
Where is?
Zoomed in on there a bit. Let me, I've got one of the bigger pictures up there that helps us.
Do the rest of the board see?
Well, briefly, I had it out last time, someone looked up at it, some didn't. So this, this is the restaurant. The existing restaurant and this, you know, it's the same property, this is, this is the house. Spin it around, you could probably see it from here. I'm hoping to make this the land survey shop and then this my mom's little craft shop there on the back. You know, and our sign is already over here, you know, our previous approval, we had, we had said that we were gonna come into this entrance that's here anyways. You know, here's where our sign is and, you know, instead of, instead of people pulling out back here to come up the staircase that was gonna be in our office, they'd come in the same entrance, but they'd go left. And what Jim's gonna do is block the existing driveway for the house off. Put a little fence across there, so, you know, the whole traffic flows in his entrance and my entrance and then people would pull in this way.
So is there, is there another curb, there's a curb cut here and here now, right?
There's one here, there's, there's one here right in front of Gravy Baiters and then there's kind of a loop.
And those are gonna be?
Yeah, this, you know, there's another one that's not on here and it's a DOT-approved entrance that he had for going up back to my shop and to his docks. And so, you know, we have that entrance for, we were gonna shut off the driveways. So people wouldn't get confused about, pull in air, pull out, loop it around.
Somebody grab this. So Joe, the edges of your drawing here, are those the note lot lines or?
No, I, you know, I've got that showing the overall lot line and then I kind of zoomed in on the area that would be pertinent to, to our use. Just so you guys could see it in more detail.
So which is being blocked here? This is being blocked?
No, no, this is, this is the restaurant, the two restaurants are down here.
Okay, so you're, which is being blocked?
You're right, this is being blocked. There's another entrance already that was our previous approved entrance and someone, Jim here, he's, anybody that doesn't know, he's the, he's the guiding force up here in. So yeah, there's, there's two side by side kind of pieces here right now. This driveway would be blocked off so that everybody pulled in this way.
How far along in the process of reviewing the materials did you get on this last time?
Everybody last time kind of wanted a chance to just digest it and take a look at how that way it's written, you know, I was kind of open. The primary use is already approved on the same math and law and I was hoping it wouldn't be too big a deal to move it over there because part of the issues we had before, you know, the fire marshal and the planning board was concerned about, you know, fire hazards being over the kitchen and on the second floor and stuff. This, this move would alleviate a lot of that, so, you know, part of that was.
That was the big question was, do we continue the conditional use permit or is it a new one? Ken didn't seem to think it made much difference, so whatever's the bureaucratically most convenient is probably what we should do.
The only thing I would catch up on is that it's a different facility.
Right, well, that was the discussion.
Can Kenny join us?
I think I heard his people walk out there a few minutes ago.
It's still on the same parcel land. It's in a different structure, but it's still on the same parcel land, which I think you're gonna find makes it, that he could most likely continue on what he was doing before.
But it wouldn't have, like, we did have the extra stipulations in the other building because of fire, because he was above the kitchen. None of that is an issue now. And now the only issues would be what, septic and entering and turning and entering from the road?
The road issue is, was taken care of last year or the year before when I put my dock, dock business in there. We're in the process, if you went there now and looked, we cut the pavement, that driveway's coming out, we're gonna put a fence all along the edge, block that off. All traffic would have to come into the roadway going into the parking lot and then turn, then turn, there's ten parking spots right up front, right off of that road for the new business, as well as the remainder of the parking lot out back.
And you folks just, just, I'm, I'm. You folks have determined that this was in commercial A, right? And did you start to glance at standards?
No. No.
Just see if we have an application.
Did we answer the question of whether or not it's being considered as a new conditional use permit and then it's through the process versus?
That was the question. I think that's between the.
Amending the current versus amending the current, right?
Guess if that would make his office work easier, then I, I would have no objection to that, you know, just stipulating that it is in a new building and it's actually less complex than it was before.
But it's also a residential building, looks like a commercial building, which seems like you've not done the same property.
Yeah, there's no, the residential is permitted and the commercial is permitted, used with review, so I don't see it as a, you know, problem.
No, not as a problem, but it's maybe a little different. It won't leave the extra fire sprinklers upstairs?
Maybe, oh, Joe's behalf here, let's just go over and see.
What's the gross, what's the square footage of the? What's the, yeah, what's the square footage of the building?
I have an estimate on that.
About 1,200 square feet, give or take.
Is it on the big one?
That include both, both parts of it, Jim?
There is a, there is a, it's a small ranch, one-bedroom ranch with a single car garage with a six-foot, eight-foot connector.
So that single car garage is where you're talking about the art studio, your shop?
Well, I'm not sure, are you talking about the existing garage or was the building on?
The existing garage is on the front of the building.
Is attached, but not?
It is attached, the one that they're using. It's on the back of the building. It was a single car garage at one time, has been converted into a master bedroom.
And that's the space you're talking?
Yes.
We're talking about the. So, so would, the square footage of that part that's got the master bedroom, right?
Yeah. I would say no more than 1,200 square feet.
Just for that part?
No, for the whole building. It's a very small complex. It's a one-bedroom ranch.
Basically a little breezeway, mudroom type area, there's kind of one main living room and then there's this, this bedroom room on the end. So we'd basically be going into that, those two other spaces and then my mother here, this is, this is lived up. And she would, she would be doing the arts and crafts and what is currently the master bedroom area. Cause there's a natural, there's a door on this, you know, a door and a bay window which almost lends itself to looking like it's a little storefront type of thing.
And Joe, are you gonna put the garage storage building to any use or is that?
We've still been discussing that, it sounds like maybe, you know, that's a little too big building. We might store some survey stuff on one side and some stuff for his dock business on the other side, just in a storage vehicle for us. I don't think it's gonna be utilized as a garage in any, in any way.
Before we started, I had asked Joe, excuse me, about the access for wheelchair getting into the studio side. And I was thinking that it would probably be able to go in initially from the survey side and then work its way through, but that can't happen. So on the other side, he's pretty much agreed, I think, that there could be nothing more, just putting a little ramp in to be able to get that into.
The shop area for the, for the arts is ground level. Part of the building permit that I have to yet for a deck is conditional with a handicap ramp to get into the survey office. The other part is at ground level, which can be entered.
With a wheelchair?
With a wheelchair.
Yeah, there's a little bunk of some sort, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but that's fixable.
Are we ready to maybe just review, well, let's just reach some consensus on whether or not there was, there were some issues the board has. Considering this as an amendment to the preceding application that Joe had to share on the Gravy Bait facility. Motion on that? Can you do that? I'd like to have Kenny's input on that, just in terms of what we can. What would make sense through his office, I guess.
He's on the phone right now.
Does he have somebody in there?
No.
When he. Give him a hand. Or maybe we can just jump to, I'm on page 84 in the book, 6.6.3. Looking at application procedure for conditional use permits. And have you filled out this kind of submissions you need, what they're up to, Joe?
Yeah, I submitted an application sheet with her and then that was, you know, that was, just one page was fulfilled and I required me for an area to be there and the sketch and same thing, it's kind of, you know, the same, so I was gonna discuss the rest with you guys. If you're good to go, if there's more you want to see, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be.
So this wording that you gave to Kenny regarding change from what you.
This whole property we surveyed, Joe, back in 2001?
It was surveyed, it was surveyed by Mr. Stanley, what, a year, mustn't a year ago?
Right, but there is, this is the existing value survey, 2001, right here too. You know, and I, yeah, for some other work that needed, I kind of did an updated site plan when he was working on the septic system and things like that last year.
The question you were asking was, are you okay with, does it, doesn't seem to be any serious objections been raised to treating this as an amendment of Joe's previous conditional use permit for the other building. In terms of your paperwork or recording of this, how do you want to handle it?
I think I'd keep it as a separate one, detach it from the other building where, just do this as a standalone, it'd be cleaner, easier, I think.
So the other one would be scrubbed? And is there anything outstanding that Joe needs to get to you for submissions? I'm looking at, I have the address of applicant and copy of the deed, record of ownership, et cetera, plot plan, with some kind of furtherance survey, does that apply either of those documents for that? And fees and a sense from the board that could confirm, conform to all parts of your notice?
Any new signage or, you know, are you gonna keep utilizing the one that's there? No, the, the one that's there is conveniently located. Actually, we've, we've had people, you know, pull, pull in that round back looking for us already, I can see it before we were even in there, so it should work well now, we don't anticipate any change for that.
Joe, is there language somewhere? Is it in this May 15th message pertaining to stipulations about the entrance, the new entrance?
It does describe in there that we're gonna block off the existing driveway to create a better pool of traffic there.
On the May 15th?
Yeah, it's in the bottom paragraph.
Jim, is this the same? Put that on here too, driveway.
Same water supply, everything else off there?
No, it has a separate one, it's a separate entity from everything else.
Has DOT signed up on that new entrance?
Yes, they did a year or two ago, I submitted that paperwork.
Ken has a, that application. Part of the, part of the ruling on that, that when we made the changeover, that we would have to do away with that driveway.
And was it, is the fire chief, isn't he supposed to do something? Isn't there some inspection that?
Usually it's just notification that there's adequate fire protection. It's an existing building.
So not an issue?
No, I mean, we can notify it.
And the septic's gonna be adequate?
I would think if anything, you're downsizing the flowage, I did do the calculations, but.
Is that, is that an existing field, Joe?
That is an existing field, yes.
There was a family living there up until this point, so like he said, I think if anything, they're only using it parking during the day and not much, at least, aren't, not much on the weekends, I'm not sure the season will, you know, you think that you'd reduce the load in that system if anything. They will be there showering and all that stuff that they were before. Washing, fish washing.
Any, any notions from the board or can we go ahead and schedule a public hearing? We can actually, I think we better.
You've been converting the living space, bedrooms, et cetera, into offices, reception area, wherever.
Basically in this building, there is a kitchen, living room combination in one bedroom and bathroom.
So that kitchen, have you taken the kitchen out or are you?
No, the kitchen's gonna stay there, but it's all in one big open area, his offices, print, there's everything gonna be in the living room part of it. And his private office is gonna be in the one bedroom.
So single-story?
Single-story.
Any, any questions or comments for Joe or Jim? Can we go ahead and schedule a public hearing or next, next time we meet?
So we can notice?
Yeah, we will notice and.
Always we have to do a butters and all that again?
The requirement for the public hearing is a shall and son of a, so. And being on one of my. And is, is that under Joe's, if I, give those list of plans?
Usually we work together on that.
Okay, are there any other, or business?
Okay, it's just 10 days in advance.
10 days in advance.
It's usually the paper, the specific paper that we use doesn't fall right, so we'll use a daily paper versus weekly.
Your website.
No, would you just let us know? That work for you?
Yeah, definitely. I'll come out and get you all the other stuff you need tomorrow if it'll help.
Did you say you do have the deed, a copy of the deed from those other things that you did?
It's all my previous application or I can give you new copies.
Well, it would be a different deed, though, wouldn't it?
No, it's the same, it's the same piece of property as the last one. Basically, it's on the same parcel, but just taking a deed, just.
And do we need like the exact measurements of the outline and the floor?
The interior?
The dimensions.
The dimensions of the building?
That might be good to add, those onto something, yeah, just maybe your larger scale thing.
For both, for both parts of your shop?
Tyler, I'm not understanding one, one issue here. Isn't, the residence is not a lot in its own?
It's all one, it was. The town combined it back in 1980 something.
Oh, I'm with you, okay. I guess we're all set with you guys then.
I can add those couple of changes and. I agree.
Got a notion of what that date would be?
19.
June 19th, certainly, or that public hearing regarding this application, this new application?
All right, assuming that all goes well. Have you been able to assess this after, after that public hearing?
Yeah, well, often we do.
Should be, yeah. Unless there's some serious chameles or something. I certainly hope not.
Lot of, lot of serious apples, but not too many to make.
I like to think we have about as least impact as they have in the commercial district.
Anything, you pass a flag, it's a name on.
I appreciate the time, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. John? Is the status of this thing again? Basically, these two submissions are, or one submission and a. Do you see any, have you had a chance to glance at this?
Just a little bit, they've talked about it for several years, trying to do something, commercial, residential, it's a good gravelly area, the soils are really good up there, flat locked, commercial zone on the front. I think we're all in the back. And then goes down to Shawling, once you get further down in there.
And then goes down to Shawling, once you get further down in there.
Does he show where the zoning lines are on this?
I think they have.
Yeah, they're all, maybe we should know a little about.
Is he entertaining any kind of split use on the lot that could be applicable to that?
I think they weren't trying to do a specific collar, anything other than officially some kind of vertical thing up front and then third inch on the back three. Seemed like they were under the 200 foot front on 101.
Yeah, there's some mathematical errors.
And then you set the setbacks on that front lot on 101, that gets a little different because it's an commercial, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
But they're not building it this time, we just something like.
Yeah. Okay, so you didn't see any gremlins either, we should kind of.
No, the biggest issue is going to be 12th Street is a private road.
Oh yeah, we didn't know that last week, right? We didn't know what status was.
He was talking about why Nathan.
We didn't know if there was a road association, yeah. What was it going to be over there?
I don't, off the top of my head, what's involved and what's the issue that comes to the surface for a subdivision on a private road?
Maybe just looking at talking of his availability or his rights to it, usually it's all going to stem at there's an association that positively grants him the ability to widen the road or maintain it as needed, or the rights that he has for.
The owner of these, this land now is Sontal, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the name of it.
Okay, and the current lot line encompasses the proposed area and then goes out to the .
Yeah, that's the notice of pass, so we should try and break these three backlogs out of it.
Okay.
So that would be a, commercial is what they were talking about a few years ago, try to get a business there. This is a split lot there where they've got a little bit of commercial or a residential there, and then those two would be residentials.
Yeah.
Land in general, fairly flat there, I thought. There was a heart back here, and I thought it flattened out a bit.
That's right, he said he'd get us a contractor, he said he'd get us a contractor next.
Where is he owns? The corner lot. He has certainly rights all along his frontage. I don't see what the controversy would be then.
It's usually just in the deed, depending on the rights that they have, whether there is the right to maintain the road himself, or if there's an active road association, I believe there's something there, because I see it being maintained by a contractor, and there's an awful lot of houses in there, so you'd hope there'd be some sort of a formed association out there. Usually if he works with them, then the association's not going to be too concerned about three more houses out of, I bet there's 40 in there.
Right. Okay. You think there is a road association?
I see it being maintained by a contractor, grading and maintaining the road, fairly yielding too, that they're out there maintaining it. With all those houses, I would think you would have to be between the mortgages and the insurance companies now.
Yeah.
I mean, this subdivision isn't that old. The 60s are so rough, man.
So what, what questions did you pose to him? What did he read with searching for the answer to a private road thing?
He was going to nail down the frontage, like that?
Yeah, there was an issue, some of our members didn't come up to 250, so he blamed it on his boss, and he's going to make sure it's accurate and come to the, up at this meeting, but I just wanted to see if they come back.
None of them took it.
Oh, I think there was only one that was under about eight feet.
Oh, okay, this.
The little dot thing.
Yeah.
Are you ready to have a space at the end?
Okay, is this there?
It's a 2.05 acre.
And once again, Sontal, is the owner?
No, Neveson is the owner.
Oh, Neveson, okay.
Does that mean? That, that parking, I guess, for the fair previously is going to be called, is that it?
The area where you occasionally see a car for sale or a boat for sale, that's all Neveson's property. It's actually, we did the site walk for the lunch truck there 10 years ago, so that was all Neveson's property also. Which is really good frontage for a commercial business. High traffic flow, good state road, you're on where everyone's funneled and is headed toward Sanford already, so.
Be good homesteads for abandoned vehicle rules.
So if they call again, we'll get on an agenda and go from there?
Yeah, I mean, they could turn up the next meeting.
Yeah.
And we just got to get familiar with it.
Yeah, step by step.
Well, with this, we'll wait until Chip is back with us to do anything with the store owner measurements committee unless somebody has some, store owner. Justin, Kevin, I told you.
Oh.
Oh, one thing we should point out with that, just if somebody of us are wading through that, that we've talked about, and it might diffuse some of the discussion on that, may be negative. We have talked very briefly as a threesome, or as a foursome, about breaking this document up a little bit and putting some of it, particularly the segment dealing with redevelopment. I couldn't tell you what page it's on now, but maybe just Gavin. On page 11, on the February 212 document. We were thinking of putting that because it's applicable only to large-scale developments, so not fully into site plan review section.
Which, which page do we look at?
Let me get up to the current, current, on the May 5th, 2014 document. Someone did say. Yeah, so the top of page 12 in the most current draft. You see on the, where that, that talks about applicability, it really only would come into play in the context of a site plan review, so to, to kind of squeeze some of the pages out of this thing as an insertion into the body of the ordinance in a one-time, one locale deal, we thought it might be good to maybe break it up a little bit. And you'll see also that some of the language in there is repetitious of existing language in the ordinance, and we may have to do a little housekeeping and pruning on that behalf as well. Just, you might, as you're going through it, you might get the sense that that makes some sense in terms of the size of the document, and maybe some editing would be done on.
So, looking at page 12 on the May 5th.
Yeah.
2014, just off the top of my head, we're number eight, says sizing and design infiltration recharge testament and practices to establish basis criteria, either the LID guidance manual or the main stormwater best management practices manual. Don't you want to insert the word most current or something like that in it?
Yep. You're on page.
Page 12.
Page 12. And what's the citation again?
Number eight, it just seems like you ought to reference the most current main stormwater best management practices manual, rather than.
I'm not sure it makes a huge difference the way they're written, because they're just generic guidelines, so they're not really dated. And it's not bad that we're using its ideas. It might work, I mean, I don't care if we.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if you're going to reference a document, that document could be substantially different in 15 or 20 years.
Would you find me that one more time? I'm not finding.
It's not in the relevant part, it's on page 12, eight in parentheses, paragraph eight in parentheses.
I'm on page 12 on the, May 5th, 2014.
Right, at the top of the page, there's an eight in parentheses.
There's no eight on my page, there's a nine.
It's above the nine.
Okay, oh, that's on page 11 of my document, but that's okay.
So sizing, right?
Yeah, I'm with you, yeah.
It just.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Wasn't that one of the big questions was getting able to reference, if you're referencing a document?
Yeah, we do that kind of as a matter of.
Yeah, well, I think the big deal, we were talking about the most recent, was when we were talking about phosphorus loading, but these documents don't contain that information. These just kind of describe the various. The gardens you can use, the French drains, the this, the that.
At the last meeting, did you folks talk about how we're going to attack this? Should we do it in our normal manner of taking three or four pages of a meeting and divvy it up like that?
Maybe everyone should read it through once.
Yeah, read it through once and then, but just so as not to get too bogged down in the thing, and.
I didn't throw away.
It's four or something. I mean, that's, that is the way we usually do it, right? Take a, take a piecemeal and, and, well, some of the bites of this are going to be more filling than others.
So we've got two additions here, one is the February 2nd, 2012, and then the May 5th, 2014.
And that should say parentheses V6.
V6.
Yeah.
The reason for that is that we just wanted you to have, to see the development of it from where there's plenty more left off. And there weren't real large wholesale changes, there weren't more part clarity generally, and our biggest project was trying to get consensus on some meetings of things sometimes, and I think we did pretty well in changing the landings on, you know, a common agreement there.
So far, the only real changes that have been made have been in the applicability section, but it kind of spans into, what was the other section that it goes to? Applicability to, let me jump to. Well, is this the more general stuff, like if you? Oh, wasn't that page five? Yeah, but then, what was the other section that we were doing? Because remember the whole idea, does that be a applicability section conflicted with another section? That had to do with, no matter what you do, you've got user error standards?
Well, the downwind.
Some of these are just self, some of this is just.
We can get into this.
Okay, yeah, so applicability is kind of also related to section 5.25, 2.4, 3, which is on page 17. We had to make this two sections kind of giant together, so. Anyway, you'll see the reference to this 5.25, 2.4, 3 in the applicability paragraphs, so you'll see the connection immediately. That's the only place we spent any serious time. And then citations we went through, I don't know. I don't know when it all published, but.
Something we should try to share with the board is, or that everybody maybe ought to try and dig up out of their old records, is a November 11th, 2013 memo from Horace Bell, where, if you recall, we sent a letter off to Jen Jesperson before we, as a board, finished up with this thing, and we asked her for some clarification of some language that might help explain some of the wording that resulted in the final draft here. Does anybody want to help reinventing that again from Renner? Think you could find that?
Why do we wait till we get to whatever it's related to? Because I'm just as confused as anyone, I'm not really sure what you're talking about.
Just that, the wording that Jen sent us and that we re-crafted to, just to give the folks some background as to how we evolved the language that we had settled.
Just that more redevelopment?
Yeah, no.
One word that had to do with redevelopment, yeah.
Open boiler tubes, 2014, 2014, you mean?
No, it was just a two pager, November 11th, 2013, FTE. The other one that might help folks is a copy of the.
Oh, I have it.
Do either Kevin or Jess, do you have a copy of the LID manual there by Jen?
I've got the LBS form order.
In the back page there, there's a, there's a proposed application form, and some of the thinking that went into devising the language in the draft itself gave, was born because of bouncing off of this LID application form. gave, was, was born because of bouncing off of this LID application form. Does everybody have this, I guess?
I think so.
All right, sure. And what I, in a nutshell, what I think we did was, um, in the application form, it talks, it uses some state wording that Jen Jesperson changed. She, she used, um, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jess, she was using, um, what is the, uh, the two thresholds of disturbance?
Oh, incidental, non- incidental?
Yeah, she was using incidental for, um, where the state uses basic, which is the lower threshold of disturbance, and she was using non- incidental where the state uses alternative. And we had to have conformity in our language, so what we're gonna propose to Ken, just as a, as a sample submission of how it might work, uh, he's gonna have to be the author of this thing, but...
He doesn't want any checks for this?
Of the application, well, it's gotta be an application form. Just so there's conformity of language between the document and the application, um, the wording in the application would be, the post-application would be changed to, um, basic would become incidental, uh, the lower threshold of disturbance, and alternative would be non- incidental, the high threshold. And you'll see if you glance at that, it, it seems to flow very good. The, and you may encounter evenings when, um, Jess and Kevin and myself will be sharing the same thermos. And you're not to be disturbed by that at all. Just, you know, things get, get too heavy going in this, we've gone through some, uh, interesting meetings and this, and, uh, we're, we're hoping to keep this short and sweet.
Sure.
I have nothing more to add to this, the stromwater stuff, unless, uh, somebody else does, I think we're ready to. Unless there's any other new design. I need, I need one, one collective, uh, memory, if not something, that is gonna cross our, our, uh, schedule here pretty soon in the discussion that I guess is forthcoming, about the, uh, proposed land use ordinance that dealt with, um, resource protection, um, that was, that was slipped and pulled from the Warren.
Hey, give a presentation towards the... Keep your mind...
In between meetings.
Yeah.
We don't really know what's happening.
Yeah, we weren't included in it at all, he came, he announced that we were gonna sit in front of the people and talk about that you changed the ordinance and said, see ya in two weeks, and then we came back in two weeks and the meeting wasn't happening.
But he gave you a copy.
That's all we know about it.
He gave you a copy of it, so?
Yeah.
I, I had nothing else to do besides looking at some, um, some books and doing my planning work, so, um, when I was laid up, and one thing that floated to my mind was that the issue of, um, and Arthur, you'd be a resource on this being an appeals board former member, right?
I don't think so.
You ever an appeals board member? Not in Sanford? No, I was hoping you were.
Yeah, we took him to court.
You might remember this from later. The, there were two thresholds that are involved in, um, appeals that are justified. One is that it's, uh, an undue hardship. And the second one is that it's, uh, the, uh, instance is not of any fault of the applicant.
You can't create your own party.
Yeah. And I remember when that, when that language was being developed, probably twenty or thirty years ago, there was a, a, it went all the way up to Superior Court, Superior Court, and there was a, a judgment made that you cannot claim hardship if the, the lowest, the lowest bar for, for, um, obviety to claim hardship is the ability to create an individual private campsite on the lot. Remember anything about that?
Thirty years ago? That wasn't here.
The thought being that if, if you, you could not claim that your use of the lot was completely null and void, and asker and abatement or whatever, if you were still able to devise an individual private campsite on the lot. Okay, would you poke that around with Jen and somebody else, if this ever comes across our desk again? I know this is gonna be one of the things that we'll have to get clear on and, uh... And I don't know, I, the only place I would turn to for an answer would be Southern Medical, quickly, that might cost us some money. Anybody else have anything for discussion today? Motion for adjournment?
Second, no.